I'd like to call the PBA to go public.
So, Kramer?
Yes.
Commander?
Yes.
Sheen?
Here.
Al Jamari?
Not even close.
Al Ray.
I'm not there.
Brand?
Here.
And Taylor?
Here.
And then you got two. Is there motion to approve the agenda submitted?
I just want to make sure you know, they had the status of our supplemental materials application.
So, last time we discussed supplemental materials that could be helpful applicants.
And we have sort of feedback on that. Quite an update on that.
Do you want to add that to the agenda? Are you prepared to do that?
I'm going to be talking about what we got to talk about last time. It relates to the...
The first item on the agenda.
Is that true?
Is it on the agenda that you're going to do it or?
I think we can re-cord all those ones. You'll give me a separate plan of the agenda.
I just wanted to make sure that's bandwidth for work.
And is motion to approve the agenda with the decision and the presentation of that motion?
For it.
For it, okay.
And move this forward in this discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same time?
Yes.
Is there any conflict of interest for tonight's agenda? We're going to review the table later. Very done, we'll move on to general public comment. This is an opportunity for people who wish to talk to the PBA about something not on the agenda to bring it up and mention it to the committee. Very done. We'll move on to the minutes for the group of September coming first. Right here is motion to approve. So, support it in this discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same time? Most concerated. Hold this, we have a branch request from Mr. Ralph Jimenez. Staff want to help re-table that issue. But in the meantime, between tabling it and staff reviewing it in time. Once you've been at the beginning, where we are and what actually we're seeing. You want to get this for me?
Yes.
Keep going. Do we want to table that first? Yeah, that's right. We now motion to remove that table.
I look to taking the table iteration out because I'm very impressed though.
I'm beating out. Is this motion to that one? For. And move this forward. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same time? Just remove the table. Thank you, now we can talk on that.
Okay. So, I'm just going to hold this up. This is, and I apologize, I couldn't be here the last time. I was having a little continuing education thing. Us inspectors tend to endure all that so that we can maintain our inspected registration. So, what you were looking at is an individual wanting to reconstruce the garage in existing foundation. I noticed in the minutes we called it a metal wall, okay, same sort of thing. And he was four, he is four feet from the side lot. So, that's what was, I really was talking about at the last meeting. And that was what the applicant was coming to for, sort of varying because he was too close to the side lot. Upon, during your discussion, apparently I wasn't here, but he was talking about structure and uses and so on and so forth. So, I also noticed that during your meeting that we were talking about timelines and also this has been, in this condition, for extra amount of time and the nonconformity, the person would no longer enjoy the nonconforming rules and so on. So, there was an awful lot of discussion going on and I wasn't here to sort of guide you through that process. So, first of all, it's important that everybody understand what structure is. Because if you don't understand what a structure, we can't even talk about it. So, a structure, if you look at the definitions in your zoning ordinance, it's basically anything that requires placement underground or is on the ground. This foundation is on the ground, it's a structure. People drive by, you might not think it's a structure, but it is a structure. By definition, it's a structure. Next thing is, is that, you know, at first glance, you think, well, this person's going to build an accessory building, it's got to meet those zoning regulations, right? So, we look into accessory building zoning regulations and we discover we have a problem with the pole side lot. In this particular case, this particular garage, and I forgot what the year was. This garage existed, I don't know when it was built exactly maybe, but I know it existed in nineteen seventy three. I only know that because it was in, on the herb or in the assessing tax rules. Therefore, it predates the ordinance. By definition, that's exactly what a legal nonconformity is. It existed prior to the adoption of the ordinance. Even though it doesn't meet this requirement of the ordinance, it's a lawful, nonconforming, but conformed, lawful, nonconforming structure. So, once you understand that, if you're doing your little zoning rule, you understand how I figure the section of the ordinance that helped me understand what is required for nonconformity. So, the first thing that I want to talk about for nonconformity is that this is not a nonconforming use. An accessory building in this zoning district is a conforming use. You can have an accessory building in this particular zoning district. So, outside of nonconforming use, what is? Is a nonconforming building, a nonconforming structure. So, we can't reuse anything in the nonconforming part of the zoning ordinance that deals with nonconforming uses. We're not talking about that. We're talking about a nonconforming building or structure. Nonconforming buildings or structures doesn't have any time limits. This is a good example. But then it existed prior to the ordinance. And it can still be an accessory build. And it can stay in that location. The ordinance actually had a language on the funding reasons that it actually says if this person can rebuild it in this time. And that's going to be a discussion that has had a steep feeling with the planning commission that have a discussion of it some form too. So, the ordinance is broken down into major nonconformities and minor nonconformities. This is considered a minor nonconformity. Right? Oh, that's not it, can you find that section? Sixteen point zero five or start. I'm sorry, I just... Um, fifteen point oh four is nonconforming structures. Where a lawful structure exists, the effective basis of adoption or amendment of this ordinance that did not be built under terms of the ordinance by reason of restrictions on area, that's not it, block coverage, that's not it, height, that's not it, but yard, that's it. Okay, so it beats that criteria, yard. Or other characteristics of the structure or its location on the block, again, that's part of the two. Substructure may be continued so long as it remains built as lawful subject to the following provisions. A, nonconforming structures shall not be altered or extended without prior approval of the board of zoning appeals, except that a power of structural alteration may be committed without prior approval. Okay, so what I'm about to tell you is that those require this. Structural alterations or extensions, addings to lawful structure which is not conforming by reason of block size, block width, or setback, and we're talking about setback here. Shall be permitted without prior approval of the board of zoning appeals, provided that such structure, alteration, or extension shall not increase the extent of the nonconformity and shall satisfy all other site development regulations which are applicable in the day. Number two, the structural alterations which do not add to the bulk of the structure or increase the intensity of the use of the structure. It isn't, we're building exactly the same thing. D, the nonconforming buildings and structures may be structurally altered so as to prolong the life of the building or structure. Most nonconforming language is not built that way. Most of the nonconforming language in zoning ordinance is built in such a way that the nonconformity is supposed to go away when its useful life is over. This particular ordinance actually says that that's opposite of the structure. And C, nonconforming structures may be reestablished in their nonconforming condition in any zoning district after damage or destruction of the nonconforming structure. If such building or structure is nonconforming due only to having an insufficient setback, that's exactly what we need here. Or due to it being located on a site having a size, width, or above, less than prescribed, we propose sections of this ordinance. So, C even says may be reestablished. So, after reading all that, understanding what structure is and understanding this is a nonconforming structure, not nonconforming use, I only could conclude that this applicant didn't even need to come here. That shows that it's reasonable question.
Still stuck in my head, I think your interpretation is totally reasonable. It's all fair there. So, part of my comments are maybe about interpretation, but part of it's about maybe problems with the ordinance. So, I'll just say that, you know, it's not clear to me that this necessarily is just the definition of structure. If I quibble just on the idea of on the ground, this is clearly in the ground, not on the ground. And that's not, not clear in the ordinance to me, the difference. We don't talk about in the ground, we only talk about on the ground. And the exceptions that they noted are things that, patio side blocks, things that seem similar to me to a foundation or a rat wall, right? And those things are excluded from inclusion as a structure. So, that might be, you know, that might be one area to kind of clean up to kind of define more clearly what the structure and what's not a structure. Also has, you know, this is kind of new conversation, what about the ordinance itself? If the problem is enough of an existing nonconforming structure to maintain its status as a nonconforming structure? If you leave one brick in the ground from a garage, does that save the day? And that fifty years later, you can completely build that garage? That you saved one of those foundational bricks?
Based on the language in your ordinance, yes, but I can tell you what is our community's view.
Well, this anyway is making a point. Yeah, and that's problematic to me, you know, and, you know, one wall is that enough. In this case, you've got four walls, but you know that one of those walls, because of the engineering, or it needs to be repaved. Because that's according to you, which is fine, but reasonable interpretations, that's totally fine. One brick is suffice in qualifying for a nonconforming structure. The other issue to me is, you know, the language is clear, the ordinance said you not pass to the extent of the nonconformity. When I read that, it means this garage can't have any ease on that side of this garage because doing so would add to the extent of the nonconformity. Is that a reasonable interpretation?
If one can conclude that the previous building didn't need ease?
Was the nonconforming use of garage that no longer exists, or is this being a structure self? If it's the rat wall, because the rat wall I thought was a nonconforming structure. So, if you added ease on any building that's on the rat wall, you are necessarily adding to the extent of the nonconformity.
I would say not. I would say it's whatever existed before can be built exactly, long as it doesn't exceed what it was before.
How would you determine? But the answer to your question.
It's just that what was...
How would you determine? Given the instructions there, how would you determine whether it had an ease or not and was therefore replacing that extension?
It would be difficult.
Okay, I think that's his point.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, again, I have a hard time saying you can't ease on that side here. But this one, it's already, you know, a violation of the law, which is not certain, right? It's just, if the existing ordinance says it's a nonconforming structure, so if you put up a little overhang there, I'm not going to get too worried about it. But I do think that's just ignored in our ordinance, right? The other thing was two more things I guess. So, there are two actually variance requests here. One's one will go, we discovered that they probably need another one. One was a setback issue, which you covered. The other setback issue with the accessory structures, it also called a setback issue?
Was it the number of...
Yeah, I know. That was a setback? We called it a setback? Okay, just want to make sure that the language is considered, so that's covered too. And then finally, you know, this is the bigger point, is that I do think that this is against the spirit of the ordinance, right? And so this would just mean that the ordinance needs to be cleaned up a little bit. It seems really hard for me to accept that a structure that hasn't been used for fifty years, right, is somehow be a placeholder to build, rebuild a building that is clearly a violation of two of the current ordinances. And again, nothing on this case in particular, but to me, that violates what we're trying to do with this issue of nonconforming structures and uses and trying to get buildings in the township when it's not a hardship to comply with the spirit in the ordinance itself.
He's been the one who's had me at three, I take offense.
It's nine fifty, it's forty eight.
I think it's, is, did you have a question around intuition?
Always, but I'm done.
I think the building he was going to build doesn't have an overhang anywhere. It's a devil kind of thing, and there's a...
I'm not going to take it. But I think that's the point, if we're going to clean it up, you need a consensus on what you're cleaning up. And I could sit here and argue the other side. I'm assuming if they had a building, a garage, it had an overhang. Probably not a trankway right overhang, but a normal overhang. So, my interpretation to you would be, he can build that building with an overhang, a normal overhang, whatever normal is, probably eighteen inches.
Or eighteen foot.
Yeah. So, if you're going to clean it up, you move, I like the spirit of the ordinance that it can be replaced. Because it serves the public and it does increase danger. In place of not having a nonconforming structure, right? And so, my tendency would be to support him even if he wanted to rebuild it without mentioning that issue. Because it isn't a safe issue, it's a space issue, twelve feet up in the air or something. And I think if, you need to clean up the language so that we all, the planning commission and the board, agree that this is how we're not going to interpret it, so we have the guidance we need. But I wouldn't make it much more difficult.
Well, just to that, you know, the ordinance is clear that the PBA should not consider economic considerations, right? And this person is clearly, that was primary in their desire to rebuild there was that they have this wall and say, no, we don't want to understand that. And so, you know, when you say it can be, it doesn't hurt anybody, true. I mean, in the sense that the neighbors are not complaining, but, you know, it is a violation of our current ordinance. But it's primarily driven by economic considerations, right? And is that enough to clean it up? So, while the PBA should not take into consideration the financial circumstances, the planning commission can. And I think that the zoning ordinance was written liberally for, possibly in service of that. There's several elements in that ordinance language that allows flexibility and more from this attitude. So, I can only check that as to what the implications were in allowing that to levels liberal allowance. So, I mean, I agree, this block, I think, in terms of the ordinance language. And we should do so with how we feel. I personally feel that retaining the retaining wall, I imply in fact. And while I, you know, as part of the PBA, I won't take into consideration the, you know, financial particulars, there's still a part of me that is empathetic to property owner.
And I would add, what I deduced from his discussion, he was willing to pay money. Money was not an issue for him. He said several times, I will do what you tell me. Money wasn't a barrier. And when we finally allowed him to go ahead, in my head, it was he can handle that. It's not, it's not an impediment to his building, his building. He's already said that, he spent money, he's done it. So, I didn't, like you, I don't think, normally I, he's talking, others are talking. You don't want to focus on money, but there's a balance in there. You don't force people to spend fifteen thousand dollars to green an hundred thousand yard is difficult to fix it. You accommodate the fact that that's what it costs and that's unreasonable, given the topography of the particular piece. So, we don't want to base our decision on the economic issue, but it does factor in with discussion. And I think it's... Anything else?
Well, I'd like to say, you know, round blasting, heat blasting, the townships, they're nonconforming buildings everywhere. And we, as long as we have a place to cut it at, we should turn around and rebuild it. Everywhere that we've ever had crap, I'm just in a region of the Volkswagen building. And I've renovated it twice over the years, but there is yet, that's nonconforming. And we've never been questioned on that, as long as we leave a place of wall, but you can't approach it further into it. So, we didn't tram sideways, we didn't go that, we didn't repair. If we did, a million grand salary on a street with a pack of good dogs. And a rat wall is a rat wall. You know, a rat wall, there would be six inches, we could tell you that, you're supposed, we've always set foot. But, you know, it was fifty years old, forty-eight years old. Actually, that really, I don't know what that is, because it's back up to our property there on Ross and Road. And I've been by that place, you know, a lot of times. I mean, if it wasn't structural setting, there's no doubt about it. But I hate to see somebody let the, you know, change the ordinance to be so restrictive that we just throw it out the door in the second somebody asks for it. We're right back to why is this board here? Where are you helping people and grab things that don't interfere or just because it's a word in an ordinance that says this? So, that doesn't make it, you know, not well, if that's it. That's all.
Very common. I would just confirm, how can it not be on the ground?
Yeah, it's in the ground.
It's not the ground. I had that fun with that discussion.
I had one, just, you know, I think you'd have to find where a wall was buried in the ground, if that's on the ground, it's a...
It's in the ground. Well, but that, on the ground has to include the capacity of the in the ground beyond the ground.
What I'm talking about, it doesn't have the capacity. We're talking about whether it's in or on. It seems pretty simple to me. I mean, again, that's just a small... And, yeah. And, you know, and that's the arrow point. If all the surrounding townships and municipalities treat structures in a similar way, that is, you can say the smallest, you know, one single footing and that qualifies you as a nonconforming structure forever and ever in perpetuity? Fifty, a hundred, two hundred years? Then maybe that's okay. I think that's a real problem, I mean, you know.
Well, you take it, really, because you're on a renovation on Friday night. You know, there, there are about thirty feet. And I just take the Volkswagen, the buildings are all the way up to my wall strip. And everyone, if you were to rebuild, then that's why that doesn't happen, by the way. And made it right away, they would have to move back, they had additional footing. And if you go over on Grand River, the face, there was a racket there, they said I'm firing it first in the ground. There was an older building on Grand River, the Savratt Extra, fully rented, made of sites and everything else. That's the township then, when we went to rebuild, they went along. The foundation, everything was that. Turned around, they made them swing the building sideways and then meet all the setbacks. If you look at that building, how it's on a high shape coming there, and it's hard to rent. The four, only one we knew, we took the same building back right where it was. And that didn't happen.
Well, that's not a simple, I mean, I think there are other considerations there that I might say today, like the lock shape, right? I mean, we have language, even as part of our review of the variances, right? So, if you've got an unusual lock shape, then maybe there's special conditions where you can be granted areas.
Your picture is really incredible, that's just got burned out.
Well, that's also a normal consideration now, yeah.
Well, your interpretation is that we, they can rebuild that building that was there without any way to prove?
Well, I just...
I mean, the way you interpret the ordinance, he can do that, and in your case, he would as well, like.
Yes, Rob, may I make my proposal to the end of the hour? First of all, I think the analysis of your department's excellent. You did a great job. If you had been there to begin with, would this outcome even have come to the planning department? Just a little more?
He slid through a change in staffing. We had a prior staff who left, Miles came in a little bit later, this is already on the agenda.
The next question is, your distinction between fire not conforming use and fire not conforming structure. If you, if he didn't want to put in a garage here, but he wanted to put in a business or something?
I'd say he wanted to put in a machine shop. A machine shop in that zoning district.
Would your analysis have been the same, or would he have been required to come to the zoning board?
Well, it was flat tonight, he told me can't do that unless he wants to go see the planning commission for a text amendment or a zoning change.
Okay, so, the question to your analysis was that this entirely on the structure aspect of it?
And obviously from the structure, and so the permitted use.
Okay. The last comment I'd like to make is that, and I've made this before, is that this ten-foot setback, the next door neighbor never complained about what he wanted to do. And even though we're required to give notice to everybody within a certain number of square, a certain number of feet, that they have an opportunity to come and object, it's not part of the, it's not part of the ordinance. So, I would ask that the planning commission look at that. I know they're looking at other issues dealing with this whole area of variance, but it seems to me that if we're going to give notice to people to object, that the absence of an objection should be considered as something that would be positive for granting a variance.
That's a good point. We do it, but we, you're saying it isn't, it is illegal to what we're doing.
You're obligated to give notice, but you're not, you can't do... You can't take that consideration and put it into a decision. Somebody comes and objects, it doesn't make any difference if they object or not. It's not part of the element, or it's not part of the four elements. And the same thing, you know, we talked about this before, safety, safety's not part of the element. I'd just like to see this whole issue of variance, the four criteria, looked at by the planning commission and take all these things into consideration.
That would be a planning commission activity or a board activity?
Well, the planning commission would start out looking for amendments, I assume, to the amendments of the...
And then the planning commission would, if they want to change texts in the zoning ordinance, then they would make that recommendation to the township board for approval.
Well, I'd like to do this question, because I used to be on the board number and I don't know the answer. If the township board wanted to add, then it's without going to the planning commission, it could have.
It could, wouldn't be viable for me. And the reason for that is that you have folks sitting on the planning commission for a reason, because they're good at what they do. And they can think of things that may be ordinance, they wouldn't hold themself... of things that may be ordinance, they wouldn't, who would think of it? Um, because, um, you know, a planning commission is trained in planning.
Right.
Trained in construction of those building works. Trained in your, you know, comprehensive plan, they're trained in those areas. So, I would always recommend to the township board, they don't have to do it, right? But I would recommend the township board, only by the planning commission only decisions.
I would ask you a technical question, not, not an official one.
Okay.
Wasn't one of the comments? Did I see any other?
Something I would, I would ask is that if there's a reconsideration of the ordinance language, firming it up, that you consider, uh, agricultural uses in an order and western part of the area, you know, we have plenty of country farms that have been doing their business, that structures, that may be in various stages of decay, that, uh, based on future farming needs or agricultural needs that need to, uh, be dealt with.
What I'm saying for that, there's going to be to be discussion about the Rachel Farm Act, and whether or not going to even apply to them, and there's, there's a whole bunch of moving parts on that.
There's no action we need to take on this?
If you can just affirm that, uh, no, no variance will be required. That's what I would recommend.
Are, are we going to reverse that applicant?
Do you mind if I put a question, do you, we got lots of.
Yes. Aaron, and I want to figure out what you want to do, but I think that is to, um, reverse.
Yeah, in the normal process, he would have come here, uh, to our air, technical air staffing, and whatever it is, he has to take the fee, and it isn't justified, so I, I, um, it looks like a consensus to, from our perspective, you shouldn't have to do that to get that out.
That, that's our perspective, that's Aaron's perspective, yeah. So, um, I'll deal with that tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to affirm? Do I get a motion to affirm staff's interpretation?
Uh-huh.
And move support?
Support.
And move to support through the discussion. Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both hands signed?
Okay.
I want to thank you, Seth, but this, this is really interesting process. Like, I, when you showed up, you helped us a lot to deal with it. We did end up not messing enough, we enabled it, uh, to try to get clarification. You got, plus, when you were able to do anything to do, that's all, so I want to thank you for all the work that you took to do this, and.
My second thought, so thank you very much. Very helpful.
I want to thank the board for sitting with us, uh, before we get a handover denying, because it sort of blocked us not having this discussion.
Right. Well, I think Miles, Miles Gold and the, your other staff personnel here, I think they let us down in the past, uh, and that was pretty. Um, is there any new business to come before this? You know, we, we, under old business, that's right, we didn't complete old business, because we want to talk about this issue of, of, how, how.
I think about that. Yeah, so, um, I, I don't know if this is what you're referring to, but just because this is my first one, I, oh, God, once again, getting to learn the ropes, and I kind of inherited this kick, but this time around, Florida State, they made a staff report with a patch in the packet, and like I said, my email to the DVA, these will be in every packet afterwards, and I'll go through the permit ordinances, attach a map on the back with measuring.
Super, that's great.
I'll do my best to keep everyone informed, yeah, myself informed for them, from the gate, because that helps me think, because I'll look at this when the variance report comes through, and then a month after, after all this old discussion, I'll read it, and I'll obviously have to back it up.
Well, I think one of the points that I remember from your discussion is, will the office be aware that they're going to have to descend the position on requirements before they come? So that they are taking through the answers to those questions.
Yeah. Again, that's my job to mitigate that, that's my whole intent, and what I've been doing since I've gotten here, it's about seven weeks now, is mitigating those things involving people. And I, I truly do believe when it comes to the DVA, it should be these one-off circumstances. And I, it shouldn't come, you guys, I don't mind you doing some mitigating, it shouldn't come if I try to mitigate it, and there is no mitigating. But, um.
I, I just want to clarify, I think we're talking about two separate things.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, we had initiated, uh, a, a request to see priority joining, and that was to Adlin, which is to the application form of the four criteria, which she did, and at the last meeting, we discussed, uh, uh, some, uh, model work that's made in, uh, township had done, where they had a worksheet, uh, that was in addition to the application, that provided a, not only those four criteria, but, uh, examples of how, uh, types of questions. And if I remember correctly, what we wanted to see was, uh, our own version of that, so that not only can you do your work, but perhaps precluding you, uh, from having those conversations when someone looks at the application and says, "Oh, I have to descend X, Y, and Z related to my application, perhaps I won't even apply for, uh, a, a, a variance request."
Yeah.
Um, and so it's all, you know, educating them, I, I, our citizenry, uh, about what they're going to, uh, uh, encounter when they come before us.
Yeah. And we are talking, and that's what went out in the meeting, because I remember your example for that, and DVA, those four criteria, if you can, uh, if someone can get a variance packet now, that's part of the packet, is that language. It's got some structure, and not only with this, but others in, in the package, and when people are like, they can get a packet now. So, I mean, we're talking one document right now about the rise, and one thing that we've talked about is, I've explained, hey, when you come here, this is how it's going to develop, and you need to be prepared for that, let's take a look at this and see if we can, I'm trying to do exactly that.
And I, and I did that for years, anytime somebody would come to the body, and off, off, long time, long I was done, I would always make sure it would go over section twenty-two, one oh five, which is the criteria for this board to determine whether or not the applicant is subject to consideration to be approved. Um, so I'd always do that over the years, if they weren't prepared before they got here. But, being on an application is.
My only real concern is, I appreciate that, I, I think that when staff does his job well, and works with the consumer, to clarify, that's helpful. My concern is, we have some people in the township board intimidated by our process and our procedures, and I don't want that, that fear and the complexity of the application process to stop them from having access. It's a balance, but I appreciate the way you guys are saying it, but I think we have to be aware of it. Everything is based, it's damn complex, it's not funny. Everything is web-based, and people don't have web access, they don't know how to navigate these systems, they don't have Wi-Fi. We've got to keep the door open.
Absolutely, I'm here to work with people, for sure, and that's, we've worked with plenty of people, we last time talked about the steps example, they talked about keeping a variance, and just moved the steps for the pride of the debt, and no variances are hard to work with, that just made it simpler on them.
Cool. But, as a nominee, I think we want to be user-friendly. We don't want to violate the rules, and we don't want to set any precedent, but we are here to serve. And I appreciate everybody on the board, because we've been doing it now for many years, um, we want to keep it going, going live.
Okay. I'm still asked, in the, the language that you're giving, providing applicants, then are you adopting similar kind of every day, which is an example of a nation?
I look at that example, and that's one thing I'm trying to do with this work, and your pitch, I want to talk to you about that example, and how we can build out our own thing. There's a lot of things that I've been reworking, working, this is, I can't, I can't work, rework, you know, this permanent process I've set in place, I don't want to go ahead and change it for them, because I've been putting ten years, first week I came in to work.
Well, I mean, we, we can talk about, you know, the revision of the criteria, but the gist of the point is that, you know, in order to simplify this, it would make it easier. The discussion, twenty-two, one oh five, I mean, there's a lot of different meaning along this body about what exactly that means, and so, you know, pictures, drawings, diagrams, examples, anything that more clearly conveys the intent of those four criteria, I think would be welcome to the office.
Absolutely. I, I love Jake's idea of the examples. You could show this, such as.
Yeah, I hope it's great, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, the only, and my only thing is why I'm measuring twice for a cut here, was getting them out packet together, and things that make their way to the DVA often are these one-off things that don't fit neatly into some example. So, whatever examples, images I put together, need to be carefully crafted, because what I don't want is to give people the wrong impression that they can come to the DVA for something, and their situation is slightly different, that's quite, as we see, slightly different than if you make a big deal.
Right. Jake, is there any, you do that?
Well, so, couple things, I, I believe we made a direct request for that, uh, and, and so, uh, the other thing is that you're not alone in this process, you know, we are here to support, review that, that document, uh, to ensure that it is in alignment with how he thinks, and how he interprets, uh, uh, the ordinance language. And so, uh, so, those are the things that, uh, you know, have to keep in mind.
Cool.
I'll try to get them together quickly, then, and I'll spread it out early.
Anything else? Any new business? Any others?
Why, why do we have new business in the?
Okay. Uh, is there any additional public comment? Anybody wish to, I call a point about something. Thirty-nine, do I get a motion to adjourn? So, and move and support it, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Are they building a Taco Bell by Meyer? I've heard that's over. A Taco Bell by Meyer.
Yes.
Along the route block.
Well, instead of inside.
I don't have one. I remember. By, by the way. Yeah. I do all the drop around. That was out from all of. I got it from the first day. I got the, I got the app in the river, and then you got.
I think the tape is there.
Yeah, definitely. And well, there's a lot of people, whatever, there's a lot of people, a million things that.
I'm doing, yeah. I'm doing it. 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 I'm doing it.
Yeah, well, my head's, you know, it's built for these one exact...
I don't know, I don't know. I'm just a lot of reasons, other reason, why. So, I have to... I probably have to, you know, talk to you.
We, uh, do, you put your... Share. Oh, that's rude.
You let it down, what is it? Hey, share.
I think, well, I first, yeah, I think they're all...
Well, under the...
Yeah.
So, then, just want to change, yeah?
I can't. Yeah, and they, they're, they get up there and they would say, "Never been married." And they, you know, they would say, "Never been married." And well, we, we don't, like, still ask, we, like, we still, like, I, I did. But, you know, our, uh, you know, we had, you know, got this, you know, but I was working on some...